Education meeting for Tuesday, March 28th to order. At this time, there will rise and ask Mr. Sherry Stone lead us in pledge.
But allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Stone. So like to welcome everyone that's here, attendance tonight, those that may be joining us online. Appreciate your interest in White County school system. And as we get into tonight's business, which is reviewing the proposed budget for, this would be the 24-25 school year. All of our meetings are open to the public and we follow guidelines and policies that are outlined with that. Our meetings are recorded and made available for reference in the future. Someone choose to do that, found on the school website, www dot whiteco schools dot net. So moving on to item, agenda item number four. That's the disclosure of conflicts of interest. So any board member has a conflict of interest they would like to disclose, please let that be known now.
Mr. Chairman, no conflict of interest, but just for public record, my wife is a teacher in the system. And all the items that you'll hear me discuss tonight are of the best interest of this school district, these students, and putting the school system above all else. So just no conflict of interest, I don't want to make that public statement.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Chairman, I have to say the same thing, but also I have extended family members, also their teachers are working in the school system. But every decision I make should not reflect upon them in any way. And that's nothing to bear except for the best interest as information that I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Howard. So minutes reflect that both Mr. McDonald and Mr. Howard stated they have spouses at work in the district, but nothing constitutes a conflict of interest on the agenda that we have before us tonight. So tonight is our board workshop discussing the fiscal year 2025 school budget. So we will be allowing director and anyone else that's pertinent to the budget, putting that together for us tonight, will be allowing them to present to us. We will have the opportunity to ask questions and then dive into that a little bit. But we will not be taking any action on this budget tonight. That will be, that's scheduled for a meeting Thursday. That would be May 30th here at six o'clock at the, six o'clock here at the V O E. So I think tonight we have, what we have is two budgets. One would be school nutrition that we, that we will be considering on Thursday. And then our general purpose budget, general purpose school fund budget. And that will be for the upcoming year, fiscal year 2025. So this time, I'll turn it over to our director, Mr. Fromberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. First, want to start off by saying thank you to Mr. Chad Markham and Ms. Linda Alley, who did the bulk of work as preparing the budget and putting it in this format for you tonight. I appreciate their hard work. Thanks too to our supervisors who worked hard to get them all the numbers that they needed to prepare our budget for this evening. And I just appreciate everybody's hard work behind the scenes to get it to this point this evening. Board members, you received a preliminary copy of this budget, I believe, last Friday to begin looking at. And since that time, we've made some small changes, or we've made some changes to a number of different areas. And I'm going to allow Ms. Linda Alley to speak to those specifically, just so you can mark those accordingly in your packet. So Ms. Alley, if you'd mind to speak to them, what kind of changes we've made since the first issuance?
Okay, and then regular teachers, salary, seven eleven hundred.
Just look one second, let me, okay, I'm gonna get them there, Ms. Alley. So.
Page five.
Yeah, yeah, page five, seventy-one, one hundred.
I went back and double-checked these, the pictures we had in this category. And we ended up having, we got two thirteen regular teachers and three part-time teachers. And two extracurricular teachers in case the numbers come in and we're named out. And so that, that increase, that goes amount.
Okay, so Ms. Alley, that's on page five. That would be seventy-one, one hundred. And are we looking at that as, I guess that would be.
Subfund.
Subfund one-one-six?
Yes.
And so you have that, that number is thirteen thousand, seven hundred. I'm sorry, thirteen.
Let's get that.
Forgot, let's start over, two commas, right, I apologize. Didn't want a bunch of teachers to get scared. Thirteen million, seven hundred. And so that's a revised number from what was in there, what we saw this weekend, correct? Okay, you know approximately how much that was revised?
It was thirteen million, thirty-four thousand, seven thirty.
Okay, so.
It was thirteen.
Thirteen million, thirty-four thousand, seven thirty.
Compared to last year, that was last year's.
Correct, that's correct, that was last year's, right.
I'd have to look at what we had from Friday's budget.
Chairman, may I ask, was this due to an increase in the number of teachers or increase in salaries?
We couldn't really hear you, what you said it was for, why, the change. You explained it, and it was kind of hard to hear. Okay. Included in this is two hundred and thirteen regular teachers and three part-time teachers and two extracurriculars. Two extracurriculars? Yes. The extracurriculars.
So, go ahead.
The number from Friday's budget was thirteen million, ninety-nine thousand, three hundred.
So approximately on subfund sixteen, that's been upgraded approximately six hundred thousand from what was sent to you on Friday. Okay?
Okay, and on that same page, line item option two oh four, that's back in retirement, that amount decreased by ten thousand dollars, or nine thousand eight hundred.
That's on line item two oh four?
Yes.
So the ninety, the nine fifty-two, nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, so that was increased ten thousand dollars?
I'm sorry, it's, it's two oh one, social security. That's the increase, it's equal to nine twenty-five to one to nine oh thirty-five.
Okay, so that would be subfund, our line item two oh one, so that's ten thousand dollar increase in social security.
Okay, then, in the seven twelve hundred special education series, I reduced the teachers' one-one-six. That's one meeting of seven hundred fifty-five, one meeting of seven hundred fifty-five now.
Okay, so that's a decrease.
Of a hundred and ten thousand.
Decrease of a hundred and ten thousand from what?
Pretty quickly, thirty-two budgeted, I called Dr. Thompson, he had one minute for thirty.
Okay, so that would be a minus two from originally budgeted teachers.
Line item seven twelve hundred, one six three, educational assistance. That's reduced from three eighty-seven, three hundred ninety-seven thousand to three hundred eighty-five thousand.
Okay, could you repeat that, please, on the line item?
Seven twelve hundred, one six three.
One six three, educational assistance.
Okay, one six three, apologize. And say that was decreased?
Yes.
Down thirty-seven thousand, it was three eighty-seven.
Three hundred fifty thousand.
Okay, all right.
And why did this one decrease? It decreased? Yes. Because? Because we. Dr. Thompson.
Yes, I had put my budget request for a new CDC teacher, comprehensive development class. And I want these to be for sure, we actually take five new members from that position. It's a while I have to do, is just take some of those students and divide those out between some other classes. Another position was a special speech teacher. I applied for that, could find anybody for that one thing. And our contract with side kids, outside, they can do virtual now, I only have to hire a teacher assistant instead of a teacher. And so we still get the services they need, and so we will do it through virtual, the teaching assistant.
All right? All right?
And making those changes, the benefits will change, two oh one social security. Drop down to a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
One thirty-nine, seven thirty.
Okay, so approximately four thousand?
Close to five thousand.
Close to five thousand, decrease in that category from what we presented, okay?
And two oh four retirement is dropped down to a hundred and forty thousand.
A decrease of almost, a little over eight thousand.
So that's a decrease of eight thousand?
And two oh seven medical insurance is decreased, twenty-six thousand is down to three hundred fifty thousand.
Okay.
And that's all on that page.
All right, Ms. Alley, could, just for clarity, in the special ed program, when you took teachers out, there was decrease in salary and also the social security, state retirement, medical insurance did, was there an increase in those same categories for the regular teachers, instructional teachers? If you added, would that not be an increase in those same categories?
No, the seven eleven is where the regular teachers are, seven eleven one.
Okay.
If he's asking if you, if we added teachers in seven eleven, would that increase the salary and benefits in those categories as well, in seven eleven?
I would back and check that, and the only thing that would increase would be the social security benefit.
So social security, that's, that's the only increase that we'd see in that area? Okay, thank you.
How many, how many regular education teachers do we have last year?
Thirty.
No, no, regular ed, we got two thirteen this year, how many do we have twenty-three, twenty-four?
We had, and we had two seventeen.
Okay.
Budgeted, we had two eleven and we had extra.
Okay, okay.
And we didn't have to mean all of those.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, that's all on that page.
Okay.
And see, there's no change in something yet. On page seven, that was down, entry era, under seven, twenty-one thirty, other student support. Under the medical insurance.
So that'd be?
Oh, two oh seven.
So that'd be seventy-two, one thirty, line two oh seven?
Yes.
Medical insurance, okay?
And I had ten thousand eight hundred, and it should be a hundred and eight thousand.
Okay, so.
A big change.
Yeah, so that would, so that's going to be plus one hundred. And that's based on the, that's based on personnel match, correct? Okay. Good catch.
Yes, and, well, I didn't have time to double-check these on Friday before Mr. Big got to say, I apologize.
That's quite all right, understand.
Down in that same category, down in four ninety-nine, other supplies and materials. That is thirty-two hundred dollars.
Okay, and originally that was?
There was nothing there.
Okay, so it's, so you're plus thirty-two hundred dollars there, okay?
And the five twenty-four right under that is in service staff development, now I have six thousand dollars, and that is not supposed to be in.
Okay, so we're minus.
Removed.
So that's been removed on seventy-two, one thirty, line item five twenty-four, in-service staff development. That number was at six thousand, but that has since been reduced to zero, okay?
Okay, under regular destruction code from seven twenty-two ten one oh five, is a minor change. The amount should be a hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven fifty, and I had seven twenty-two ten one five.
So, I understand.
Thirty dollars.
Thirty, thirty dollars?
Yes, and that's all on that page. On page eight, in the seven twenty-two twenty series, down under two oh four, retirement, back in retirement.
Yes.
I did not put anything in there, so it should be sixteen thousand, seven hundred.
Okay, so that was plus, plus sixteen thousand, seven hundred from what we originally presented, okay?
And in that same category, three duty-free travel, I have a thousand dollars, and that makes that two thousand.
Okay.
And down at the bottom of that, page in technology, seven twenty-two fifty. Two oh seven medical insurance. Thirty thousand.
It's a twelve thousand dollar increase?
Twelve thousand and thirty-seven.
Okay, so on seventy-two, two fifty, line two oh seven, medical insurance, so that was plus.
Plus twelve.
Plus twelve thousand from what we were originally given. Okay?
And on page nine, seven twenty-five three fifty, three fifty, that should be ninety-three thousand, five hundred dollars.
Be forty-seven?
I picked up the wrong picture.
It's a change of forty-seven thousand.
Okay, so that's, what is object not in use?
You said E N A, that's E N A, our internet provider for the district?
Okay, so the description on seventy-two, two fifty, three fifty, line item three fifty, object not in use, that's not very descriptive of what that actually is, right? And you said that is actually internet service for the entire district?
Around here.
Okay.
And it's, it's a two thousand dollar increase from what it was last year, last year's budget, if you look at that. She just had the wrong number in there initially. So it's a big jump in this budget, but budget to budget, year to year, it's about a two thousand dollar difference.
All right.
Page ten, there's nothing on that one.
Okay, so nothing on page ten, no revisions on page ten?
On page eleven, down at the bottom of the page, maintenance of planet. It's seven twenty-six twenty, thirty-nine nine, other contracted services. That should be eighteen thousand dollars.
Okay, and originally we, it was given to us at?
It was ten hundred thousand.
What'd you say again, seventy-two, six, ten?
Six twenty.
I'm sorry, six twenty. Four ninety-nine?
Or three, three ninety-nine.
That's what I said.
Three ninety-nine.
Three ninety-nine, it was two hundred thousand.
So that's minus, so that's minus a hundred and eighty-five thousand.
And down in seven twenty-six, six twenty-seven, I have one administration equipment. That, I have plugged in a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. So that, a hundred and fifty thousand, that's the COPS grant match?
Yes.
So what was that, Ms. Felton, do you remember what the amount was on that COPS grant?
The total amount of our local match was, you know, about.
How much was the grant that we received?
The grant in all was just under five mil, or five hundred thousand, half a million.
Right, so basically, to get close on the numbers, and she'll look at specifically, but we got a, that safety grant was for almost just shy of a half a million dollars.
Four hundred ninety-six thousand was the total grant, and our local match was a hundred and sixty-two thousand. Part of that, we are using our public school security grant funds. We were counting on having some more of those funds for next school year, but the legislature didn't set aside any funds.
Okay, so there weren't any safety funds, believe it or not, from this legislature. And so we were counting on those, so that's why we've had to add money in here to add to our match towards this grant. So essentially, we're spending a hundred and sixty-two thousand to get four hundred and eighty-six thousand.
All right.
Okay, on page twelve, transportation, bus drivers, one, one forty-six code. I increased that twenty thousand. And then, sub drivers and a bus driver needs to receive that.
Okay, so that would be?
The eight hundred and ten thousand.
All right, so seventy-two, seven, ten, line one forty-six, bus drivers, that number was increased plus twenty thousand.
And line item seven twenty-seven ten, four, five, four eighty. I increased that ten thousand dollars from a hundred and forty thousand to a hundred and eighty thousand.
Okay, so seventy-two, seven, ten, line four fifty-three, vehicle, vehicle parts, that was plus ten thousand from what was previously provided to us.
And that's just because of the increase and everything across the board, right?
Bad news.
Okay, on page thirteen.
Bad news.
These adjustments, yes, seven thirty-three country, four ninety-nine, other materials and supplies. I have reduced that to five thousand dollars from fifty thousand. And in five ninety-nine, I put ten thousand higher.
So, so on seventy-three, three hundred, line four ninety-nine, other supplies and materials, that number has been reduced ten thousand, and then seventy-three, three, three hundred, five ninety-nine, other charges has been added ten thousand. So no change in the total, it's just reallocating those, those funds for various things.
That ten thousand, the family resource has a lot of donations, so basically, it's still being donated money. And we just have to make that amount bigger.
Okay.
And down in capital outlays, seven sixty-one hundred, seven oh seven, building improvements. That was increased to seven hundred fifty-three thousand. About fifty thousand, and that's for units on the buildings area.
Okay, so, so seventy-six, one hundred, line seven oh seven, building improvements, that amount, the amount that we have tonight, that has been up plus fifty thousand from what was sent to us on Friday.
And that's, that's a change.
Okay, so board members, just make sure that we, we all be current with the information based on what was given to us Friday, and understanding that it's a big budget, and sometimes you have to go back and revisit it. But there has been some changes that we've noted, starting with, and these have been, starting on page five, the expenses, and so those adjustments have been made. Has there any changes been made on the income side of that, Ms. Alley?
No.
Okay, all right, thank, thank you. And thank you for double checking those numbers. It's, yeah, it's important, important to get those as right as we can to start off with. Okay, so we all, board members, we're all good with the changes that have been made since last Friday? Okay, then, Mr. Fromberg, I'll turn it over to you, and we can start walking through this.
Okay, before we go any further, just want to, just apologize, for I know this is a lot of, seems like short notice on a lot of these things, but we really get these numbers to you as quickly as possible. And, you know, Ms. Alley worked really hard, we were getting numbers in from all the departments. And to be quite honest, we don't, we still don't have a full estimate of what we're going to get from the state. I mean, they've given us a couple of estimates, but we've not received one in May to see exactly what our teacher allocation is going to be. So as you, as you know, this is a budget, it's an estimate.
So as you, as you know, this is a budget, it's an estimate, and we're doing our best to, to make educated guesses here on what needs to happen in order to keep our district moving forward. So what I'd like to do at this point is turn it over to Mr. Chad Markham, our finance director, he's going to walk us through where we are with revenues, and take us through that portion of the budget, and then I'll jump back in when we get to expenditures and walk us through that, so.
Mr. Markham, if you would, please.
So we'll start on page one, page one, the very first line is the county property taxes, that's the current property taxes, and those are the taxes that will become due in October, and be due payable through the end of February. So for next fiscal year, we're estimating three million, four hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-four, surround that off to three million four hundred and forty-six thousand. That's sixty-one of the two hundred and five pennies, so our tax rate is two dollars and five cents for every hundred dollars assessed value. And so sixty-one of those, sixty-one cents of the two hundred, two dollars and five, two, sixty-one cents of the two dollars and five cents is allocated to the general purpose school fund. So that equates to approximately thirty percent of the tax rate goes toward the general purpose school fund. So that's the largest portion as far as local taxes that comes into the schools, is in that, that line item there. Next line item is your trustees collection for the prior year, so those will be taxes for twenty twenty-three, that were dividend payable through the end, through, through twenty twenty-three and end of February of this year. People can still pay those in the trustee's office until the first of April next year, and they'll be deposited into that line. After that point, they go to the clerk of master's office, which is the fourth line down, that's where they get into court fees and fines and ultimate amount of taxes, and that's the properties most of them. Interest and penalty, that's interest and penalty for late property taxes that are paid, we're estimating that at twenty thousand dollars, and the schools' portion of that next year, that's divided up based on the tax rate, so that will be thirty percent of, of what we're estimating that we'll collect countywide, and the interest and penalty is twenty thousand. So total county property taxes is three million, seven hundred and two thousand dollars for next year.
Any questions on that section, there's?
Can I ask, help me start this off right now. At the top of each page, each category right there, you start off with actual twenty-two twenty-three, original budget, amended budget, estimated, break those down for me, explain to me what those categories mean in layman's terms. Is that actual twenty-two twenty-three, is that actual what we spent?
Yes, so that would be your actual.
Actual spend.
Expenditures, revenues for that year, your original budget.
Your revenues, okay.
Your original budget is column two, so that would be what would have been passed at this time last year.
So if we was to look at last year's budget that had passed, that would be in column two?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any amendments that occurred throughout the year, if there are enough of the amendments, that would be reflected in column three.
So what is the estimated budget current year now, it's still got twenty-three, twenty-four right there?
That would be your estimate, your current year expenditures for this year, or estimated expenditures or revenues, thus today, because we're not done with the current fiscal year.
Okay, that's still, so actually, when we look over and the heading is county commission, that's the budget that we're looking at right now, okay?
That's correct, yeah.
That's the figure that we look at.
That's column seven.
Okay, well, I mean, all of them are important, I'm here, and I like that, but I, I just wanted to get those straight in my head, I thought that's what they meant, but I just wanted to hear from you, and it's good to have those for my benefit. I learn more from looking at what happened, what did, what we did, what we thought was going to happen, what did happen, I learn more from that, so I'm glad you're there.
Mr. Howard, that's, that's a good, good question for clarity, a good statement for clarity, and just for all of us board members know that, when we're looking at the twenty-four, twenty-five budget year, we are looking at column seven. That's what's being proposed for this upcoming year, column seven, headed county commission. And again, going back to the point on column four, the estimated in budget current year, we cannot, that has not been an actual, because the year does not end until June thirtieth. So there, there's basically, we have another five, six weeks left of, of, of budget for this current year.
Thank you.
So we're, we're working on, on number seven, that's a good, a good point to make, we're working on column seven.
Next section there is county local option taxes, and that's where the local option sales tax comes in, four oh two one zero is the account code there. That's two million, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we're estimating next year for that, to be the schools' portion of the local option sales.
That is new money, correct? No, I'm sorry, that's not, that's not the new money, that was, increase has not been.
That's right, no, to, yes, the, the referendum will be in August.
Okay.
So this is based on the current, the current.
It's not based on the referendum.
It's not based on the referendum, okay, so, yeah.
So and that number could change, could increase.
That's county section.
If that referendum passes in August.
Right, we wouldn't change that number until next year's budget.
Okay.
Because it's revenue coming in, so.
Okay.
But yes, yeah, that number.
So, just a question, I guess, for, for, for my, my mind, if the referendum passes, what do we see in next year's budget that, that would increase that number from two million, two hundred and twenty thousand? What, what is, what is your guess on?
Well, I think overall, that number would probably increase close to six hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
But the county, county commission will want them to continue to make their maintenance of effort, obviously they have to.
Right.
But they'll probably reduce the property tax rate by percentage as well.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be a full six hundred thousand dollars.
But there would be an increase?
Yes.
If the referendum passes?
Yes. The next, the next line is real tax, so that's the county's, that's essentially what it is, that's half of the real tax funding that's collected in the county, and then our mixed rent tax comes in at ten thousand dollars, and that's fifty, fifty percent of all the mixed rent tax in the county and the city is collected. Bank excise tax, that gets split, split up by, by the tax rate, so thirty percent of that will go to the general purpose school fund. License and permits, marriage licenses, those, the marriage license that we sell at the county clerk's office, those funds go to the general purpose school fund, so two thousand dollars worth of things we're estimating married next year.
That's not very many.
Three thousand dollars worth of marriage that's taking place.
Not, not a whole lot, well, I mean, I, I don't think the thing's a whole lot. I might actually.
They get you at the venue.
Yeah.
Yes.
Where they tax the venue, right?
The next line item is the sale of the helping school license plates, so thirty-five dollars, each time you see one of those license plates, thirty-five dollars comes to the general purpose school fund for those sales, so right there, we're, they're on two, for countywide.
Sorry, Mr. Mark, could you back up to that bank excise tax and explain that, I don't know what that means.
Yeah, so that's a tax on earnings of financial institutions throughout the state, it's a, it's a state tax, I mean, it's a state instituted tax, and it gets returned to us, through the parlaying to the state. And then that just gets split up based on the tax rate, and the way that the county's set up to do it.
Thank you.
The next one, the next page going pretty quickly, tuition, the rest of it, ten thousand dollars there, that's if we're out, as out of county folks, we talked about that before, if they have to pay tuition, they're out of county, we can figure it out.
I have a question there.
Wait a minute, I got a question.
Yeah, I have a question or two.
How many do we have, what are we charging, five hundred a year?
What's that, tuition? Yes, it's five hundred per student.
So how many do we have right now?
Mr. Haley, do you have an estimate on how many we have paying tuition?
Thirty-five.
Thirteen families.
Thirteen families.
There's a max of two thousand per family.
Right.
And we. We, I mean, many districts, that's really set by the district, many districts charge more than that, some of them charge fifteen hundred dollars, and our neighboring counties charge that.
Yes, they do.
Um, we wanted to make it affordable, make it fair, and for lack of a better formula, we determined that a parcel of land, at the time that we developed this, was worth about four hundred and twenty-some dollars in White County, and then we were also missing, so we figured that's what people weren't paying to White County by being in our, in our district or being in our county. And then also, the wheel tax was seventy-some dollars at that point, so we rounded it to five hundred, so we felt, Mr. Markham and I worked through those numbers, just to feel like we came to a reasonable number that had some merit and some basis to it. Some people are just picking those numbers out of the air, so, again, and we don't award that to anybody that applies, you know, we have to apply a hardship, so basically, if a bus will come to your house from the other district, then that's not a hardship. But if a bus will not come to you and it's closer to us, then there are some reasons where hardships would be approved, and then those people are allowed to pay tuition.
Mr. Haley, you said thirteen families currently in our system? Okay, thank you. Yeah, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Receipts from individual schools, that's, that's where if we will, if we will make the lights up, we will reimburse, reimburse us, bus trips, extracurricular activities, or clubs, or sports, have to pay back in for bus drivers and subs, they have to tunnel through that four three five seven. Kind of next on the list there is. On behalf contributions down at the bottom for OPEV, that's really, that's, that's not cash, or that's just a revenue expenditure adjustment that we have to do at the end of the year to satisfy. Accounting standards. If you flip over to the next page, on page three, TESA, that is up as opposed to last year's budget, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars, so it's over seventeen hundred thou, seven, seven hundred thousand dollars. We're expecting a TESA funds for this coming year as opposed to the current year.
They'd be on page three. Hold on just one second, Mr. Mark.
Okay, I see it, sorry, I lost you.
Okay, yeah, we're on, we're on page, page three.
Hey, just regarding, so there's fifteen total students, I missed folks, we have two families that have two children each, there's fifteen total students, thirteen families, fifteen total students that are paying tuition in our county.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Thank you.
All right, so we're, we're on, we're on revenues, page three, we're looking at TESA, fund that's count forty-six, fifteen.
So this will be the second year of funding through TESA, which replaced the BDP, which is why you see blank for the previous year on that, that's the co-rat below the basic education. Following right below that is early child education, that's the funding state, state grant funds for pre-K program, and right below that's twenty-eight thousand dollars for career ladder program, those are slowly phasing out as, as our career ladder teachers.
We should have many of those launched, shouldn't we?
And leave the system, so that's dwindling down. Going on to the next section there to finish out state revenue, state revenue sharing TBA, so two hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars. We receive funding from, through the state of Tennessee for TBA, from TBA, and that gets split up based on the tax rate again, and thirty percent of the amount that's expected to be collected for next year will go to the general purpose school fund, and that's equates to two hundred and thirty-two, three fifty-five there. Finally, other revenues of eighty thousand dollars. Other state revenues, eighty thousand dollars there, state revenues through primary education. ROTC reimbursement, seventy-five thousand dollars, above that, that is.
Hey, Mr. Mark, excuse me, could, just pause right here for just one second, because you're, we have, we have totaled the state, and from the state, thirty million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. So just, board members think that we just know that that's, that's the number, that's what we're getting from the state, if you don't mind, I should have caught this earlier. The total for local revenues?
Six million, five fifty-five.
Six million, five fifty-five, and that number is on first page, there we go, that's right, just on first page, from local revenues, six million, five fifty-five, oh eighty. And so we've now covered local and state, state at thirty million, three ninety-seven, seven forty. So now we're starting into federal funds.
Correct, the only federal money that we'll deposit into general purpose school fund as far as the budget is concerned for next year is ROTC reimbursement, we receive that monthly from the federal government to help offset the cost of ROTC budgets.
Okay.
And then finally, on the last page, transfers in, that's in fifteen thousand dollars, it's the very last line there, that's the indirect cost for each federal, or for certain federal programs, in one forty-two, we can charge an indirect cost rate based on the expenditures, and so that's what we transfer in to general purpose school fund from those programs. All in all, that's thirty-seven million, one hundred and ninety-four thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars in revenues anticipated next year.
Okay.
Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Title nine, a lot of controversy going on right there, it's paid straight to the state, is that, and my understanding right there, if that's true, how much of that thirty million dollars from the state is title nine made, do you know?
I mean, I'm not sure if it's title, I mean, the only. Title nine, I don't think that would be in the general purpose school fund. I, I don't think that would be coming into the general purpose school fund, because the majority of your money's coming through TESA, and that's all state money, the only federal money that we've got in here is the seventy-five thousand for ROTC, which on the title nine, which, title nine's a federal.
I may be off, I may be off subject, but how's title, how would title nine affect us then, if we're not?
In what regard are you talking about title nine specifically?
Well, still debate within the state whether they're going to accept title nine from the federal government, because of all the stipulations that are inside of it, so I was just curious to see what kind of money that's referring to ifs.
Do you have any words on that?
We don't get any money for title nine.
Yeah.
It's not one of their, I do title one, title two, title four, title five, there's no such thing as title nine, but I know, no money comes into us that's in the title nine.
Okay, what, what is title nine, I mean?
That's, it's six jurisdictions.
Yeah, we have, I mean, we have regulations we follow in regard to title nine and have had.
Does that tie in any money?
No, not, not as far as the school system goes.
Okay, thank you.
Other, other questions regarding revenue? Mr. McDonald?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so, Mr. Markham, just, we have, what's being proposed to us tonight is a thirty-seven million, one hundred and ninety-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-dollar revenue budget that we're, we're budgeting, that's our revenue. And if my calculations are correct, eighteen percent of that is local funds, eighty-two percent of that is state funds, and less than one percent is federal funds. Okay, so just where we know kind of where, where money's coming from.
One percent was federal.
It's less than, less than one percent.
And how much was state, eighty?
I have eight, eighty-two, eighty-two percent, of course, I rounded that up. And then eighteen percent local. So that just gives us a little, a little idea as far as, and again, we're just talking about general purpose funds, so when you get into some of the federal funds that support other programs, like. other programs like Twenty-First Century and things like that, those monies will come at a later time. So, because that works off the federal budget, and that money, their federal year-end starts October first. Okay, so we've got enough to get us through first two months of the school year for federal monies, correct? Okay, alright. So next we'll get into, uh, expenses?
Expenditures, yes.
Expenditures.
Alright, Mr. Chairman, um, board members, as we get started with expenditures, I just want to kinda give you a preface of where we're gonna wind up in the end. Um, we just saw a rough estimate of, uh, just over thirty-seven million in revenues, and as, as been the custom of White County schools over the vast many years, we've run, uh, essentially what we call, what I term a deficit budget, in which we, uh, overestimate our expenditures and we underestimate our revenues, and in the end, uh, we put back money each year, uh, into our fund balance. Uh, this year, I think there's no exception to that. Mr. Markham, do you have an estimate of what, as, as of today, what we estimate we might be putting back?
Yeah, so, as, as of today, we're probably looking at one and a half, I would think, million and maybe.
Okay, alright, thank you. So, um, just to show that that's the model that we've run in the past, um, and, um, it served us well. However, um, several things have happened, which I'll explain here, uh, this, the year, it's kind of a perfect storm or a terrible storm financially, um, because where we're gonna wind up at the end of these expenditures is a budget of, uh, just over forty million. It's forty million, three ninety, five ninety-two, which is the last number on page fourteen. So, about a three million dollar difference, um, uh, between our revenues and expenditures. So, some of the things that have happened before we get into, and these are not excuses, this, nobody's happy bet this, I'm certainly not proud that this is where we are, but, uh, some of the things that have put us in this position, uh, tax revenues, as you've seen, are not declining, but they are leveling off. Uh, it's something I know Mr. Markham's been concerned about for, you know, several years, as we've seen great, uh, gains in those, uh, sales tax especially, uh, but at some point that's gonna level off, and we're seeing that curbing just a little bit. Uh, also, funding has been cut in several areas. Uh, TESA funding is still an inexact science, we're in year one, we haven't even finished year one of that yet, and, uh, we don't have solid estimates, we don't feel as secure at this point in the year that we would under BEP at this point, and, um, so that, that number's changing. Um, for example, they changed some coding for our students in the middle of the year that drastically, uh, uh, changed the amount of funding that we get for economically disadvantaged students. There was no warning, it just, they just changed the coding and it changed it to, uh, several, a couple of a hundred thousand dollars to our, our district. And so those are the kinds of uncertainties with TESA that we're facing right now. Um, the federal government just cut, I've given you that information, just cut, uh, funding, uh, without warning, and, and, it, we had to adjust this year's budget and upcoming budgets, uh, again, that was over two hundred thousand dollars. Um, and then, of course, we had several grants and, um, uh, grant funds such as ARP and ESER that were paying, uh, in the past couple of years that we were paying positions for that those grant funds had run out, and so the GP is picking those up now. Um, all that, and also with expenditures going up, for example, our insurance cost, uh, for liability insurance is supposed to go up almost fifteen percent, uh, for our district, our health insurance is going up approximately seven percent, and of, as you know, we did large salary increases across the board for our faculty and staff, much deserved, by the way, uh, but those will have to be addressed as we address salary and benefits, that goes across that entire scale, so any adjustments we make are gonna be compounded. So, all those things together is, before we go into expenditures, I think the only position, Miss Sally, you told me wrong, the only position we are adding this year was one aide, uh, when it was all said and done. So, one teacher, that's correct, one teacher and one aide, and it based on, based on need. So, just once you know, as we go through this budget, there's not a whole lot that we've added, it's just the cost of, of doing business and the fact that we've been cut in revenues in various sources. So, not many excuses, just to be really honest with you where we are, uh, before we go through these numbers, so.
Yes.
We are picking up two, two, two aides from, uh, uh...
Correct, but it's not adding, or it's not new positions, but like Title, those, the Title Funds we said that were cut, you know, we had to pick those up, so we're, the federal government didn't give us that money, so we're picking it up. As far as new positions are concerned, we had one teacher and one aide for, based on our needs, so.
So, so I got a real quick question before we get really diving into that. Um, Governor Lee has said he wants the starting salary across the state to be fifty thousand dollars by the year twenty-twenty-six, correct?
Yes.
They're cutting our funds, how do they expect us to get our teacher salaries to that point if they're gonna cut our funds mid-year, two hundred thousand dollars?
That's a great question, and I, you know, we've, we continue to ask Governor Lee that, but, um, you know, this year I think the amount of money that they gave us for teacher raises ca- still came up about, my estimates was about twenty-five to thirty thousand short of what we were offering, um, and I'm, I'm trying to stagger that over the next three years so that we, in equal, increments, we get to fifty thousand, uh, in the, by, by that third year. Um, so we came up short in that regard, just in the amount of money, so, uh, that was offered in that category. Okay, I will go as quickly as I can, but I'm certainly, uh, willing to stop and ask, answer any questions along the way. Uh, we'll tell you as we go through each category, um, for the first, for example, the first, uh, category is seventy-one, one hundred, in which we've talked about classroom teachers, I'm gonna tell you about the salaries, but then there will obviously be increases to benefits, uh, as well, so I won't go through all the benefits, you can see those, but naturally when we add positions and personnel in areas who change that number, it's gonna change the benefit number as well. Uh, but any of those that, any of those line items that you have questions about, be sure to stop me and we will go over those specifically.
But, Mr. Jay, the, the numbers that we see in the budget, as you speak to increase, what that total may be increased, the numbers after the adjustments Miss, Miss Ally informed us of, they're gonna proportionally gonna match what the, what the salary is, because you're always, you got, you're gonna have a salary, you're gonna have matches and benefits that are gonna apply, so basically that increase, that's factored in, Miss Ally's already double-checked that, so it should be good that the numbers we see below us reflective in what that would be.
Correct, I just want, I probably won't go through every, so, so, social security, state retirement, uh, unemployment insurance, those sorts of things, I'll just let you s- take a look at those, but just the understanding that those will increase, uh, that those numbers are the budgeted numbers for those categories, but we won't spell them out specifically. Okay, so, uh, starting on page five, um, fund seventy-one, one hundred, it's classroom teachers, um, I have two hundred seventeen teachers, is that number, Miss Ally, that we had, uh, but that number's thirteen million, seven hundred thousand. If you scoot down, uh, a couple of lines, significant seventy-one, one hundred, uh, sub-fund one sixty-three, educational assistance, it's nine hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars for the salaries of those.
How many of those do we have?
You know how many educational assistants we have? Forty-one? Yeah, we do have a couple of extra positions in there for teachers and one for, uh, one or two for, uh, well, she said one for educational assistance, as the year goes on, if more students moved in and we needed to make a change, that's built into the budget.
And how many teachers did you say, I'm interested?
Two seventeen, is that the number we have right now? Classroom teachers, two seventeen. Uh, we have, uh, funds in, uh, further down for substitute teachers and non-certified substitute teachers, corresponding benefits, medical insurance. Instructional supplies, I'm down on, uh, sub-fund four twenty-nine, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, four forty-nine, textbooks, five hundred thousand. What is our adoption science? Thank you. And, uh, Miss Sally, do you have, uh, sub-fund five ninety-nine, other charges, one hundred and forty thousand?
They include the, um, middle school and high schools, spring schools.
Sports, yeah.
And then, um...
A wrestling mat?
Yes, wrestling mat.
Yeah, there was, uh, other charges, that's five ninety-nine, and I'm still in seventy-one, one hundred teachers.
What if, um, I, so I know this is my first budget I'm sitting through, so what do you mean, that's the spring sports for the high school and the middle school, is that the coaching, what they get paid, what?
So, we, we give money, I'm sorry, Miss Sally, we give money to, uh, middle school and the high school to help cover the cost of their programs. So, um, we raise money through signage, uh, bus signage, and then we also have money that the board gives to each one of those schools to be, um, supervised by the athletic director as the, as the programs need. Uh, they also do their own fundraising, but, uh, several years ago, uh, we wanted to, uh, even back to Mr. Haley's, uh, tenure, I say regime tenure, uh, we wanted to make sure that, um, you know, students weren't paying to play, and so it was important that we were meeting the needs of our teams and not necessarily the wants, and so our, our district does a good job of, of paying for, uh, bus drivers and for the, for the fuel and the bus drivers, um, and, no, they pay for the bus driver. Is that right? Teams, teams pay for bus drivers. We pay for the fuel, yeah, we pay for the fuel, uh, we pay for their, we, we make, pay for their, uh, uh, field maintenance, those sorts of things, make sure, but if they need a piece of equipment that they want for their team, that's up to the team to buy, so.
I was just checking.
Spring sports, everything, um, except for college basketball.
All the non-revenue generating.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, non-revenue generating sports.
Hopefully the T double S double A won't do what the N C double A just did, paying athletes.
Oh, I know, whether is, NIL is permissible in high school, but, and we haven't seen a lot of that yet here. Okay, that takes us to, um, the total of instructional program at the bottom, twenty million, seven nineteen, two fifty-five. Any questions on that section? Okay, seventy-one, two hundred, special ed program, um, first line, teachers, and we talked about career ladder, educational assistance, again, this is just specific within the special ed program, certified subs, and then all the benefits.
And was that the special, uh, the special ed teachers in with the other teachers, or this is separate?
This is separate.
Okay, how many of those do we have?
Thirty.
Thirty.
Thirty. How many of the assistants are these?
I think sixteen, I think that's what.
Okay, that's good.
And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Thompson, this is, or Dr. Thompson, this is just a portion of your budget, you have a lot that's federally on the foot.
I D A goes in, the G P goes about six.
Okay.
So, your spend pre-Ks, do they have to have two aides, assistants in there?
Yes.
They do, don't they, that's what I thought.
Okay, um, bottom of page five, seventy-one, three hundred, vocational education program, um, vocational teachers, I think, Sally, you said there's sixteen, I think, vocational, fourteen, thank you, fourteen, that's our CTE program. Then we also have, turning over to page six, still in the same category, uh, non-certified substitute funding, actually, it's not in any of that line, um, benefits, maintenance and repair service, and travel funding, small amounts, instructional supplies, and we had to, I think we had to pick up that position, is that correct, Miss Sally? We had to pick up one position that was being paid outside of vocational last year, so GP will be picking that up. It was just, one I think was miscategorized, uh, our computer science, a computer science position that was being paid out of another fund that'll be paid out of GP this year. And that totals one million, twenty-three thousand, three hundred for vocational.
So, Mr. Robert, if I could just...
Sure.
Pause here for just a second so we can follow this through. We, board members, we, we've covered regular instruction, we've covered special ed instruction, and we've covered vocational instruction. So, that's, that covers the instruction throughout the district that were provided from general purpose, correct?
For the most part, yes.
Okay.
May I ask a question? Vocational instructional equipment down there, last year had a hundred ninety-two thousand, this year don't see anything, is, that mean it's finished, it's paid off, is that the culinary arts, is that the, is that anything to do with?
That, that is a amendment, but, because budget with the I S M grant and the vocational student has, or what, right?
Yes, the Innovative School Models Grant, um, that is, is that the portion of the match to that?
No, that's just, their budget is, is implemented in their budget.
That's right.
Except for items, so that's, that's part of that budget.
So, that money is still being, that, I don't think that's, that hasn't all been expended yet, cause I, they're, they're still working on some of those projects, so.
We will have a budget amendment act that will come out this year to see how much money they'll have, they'll tell you that grant will be re-budgeted, and so sometime like July, we'll probably, um, have an amendment to add that grant back to their budget.
So, to your question, there, there is money in there for the kitchen project, uh, there's money budgeted for that.
This is not directly the governor, governor's innovative school grant fund, is that what you're calling?
That is, that is that line, that is that line, yes.
So we should see those projects completed then?
Yes, uh, there's, they're working on the, the greenhouse, got started today at, at middle school, so, that's one of those projects.
Well, we was talking about what we're gonna be trying to figure out how to cut some of the money, there's no way to cut some of that and reallocate it, you know what I'm saying?
No, um, and those grants are written for specific purposes, and so it has to go to where it was written, yeah, yeah. There might be some other places that we could cut and reallocate, but not, the grant funds are written for specific purposes. Okay, um, I'm, I'm middle of page six, uh, seventy-two, one ten, attendance, um, attendance supervisor, salary, uh, benefits and travel, pretty straightforward. Seventy-two, one twenty, bottom of page six, health services, uh, we have health supervisor, coordinate school health supervisor, um, we are nurses, are along line, uh, one eighty-nine, that's eight nurses. You know, two years ago, we were paying with ESER funds, we were paying at least four.
It was E L C.
That's right, E L C, yeah, the E L C grant.
Testing funds.
Yeah, this came out of COVID, and, uh, so we were paying that, and we used a lot, we saved, we didn't reduce our budget, we used that money to do some capital projects to get a jump start on that, if you remember back to that, but that money's all gone now, so now it's back to GP picking up those salaries.
So we have, uh, one nurse for every school?
Correct, and a, and a supervisor, yeah.
That's overall the nurses?
Correct, yeah, coordinate school health supervisor.
And, um, so, how many is put back in here that we have to come up with the money to pay for?
Well, they were already back in there this past year, but that was, but two years back, but that's, that's what I was saying, just, it's been building that, that momentum of us adding back in things that we had grant funds previously for. So, this is, these are not new additions, but it's, this, that number of two sixty-two, seven fifty-five is for eight school nurses.
The new law that is requiring minimum number of students per, uh, health administrator or nurse, whatever, where are we within that, aren't we?
Yes, but, and, yes, we've been covering that for a long time, that's, you know, uh, making sure that our, we're covered, um, and I don't know how that breaks down, that's one of the mysteries of the transparent TESA, they just say everything's in the base, uh, they can't tell you how much of that base is nurses, and, and so it's really...
They changed the figure on it.
Yeah, it's, it's really a, not a transparent, uh, you know, under BEP, I'm soapboxing here, but under BEP, I could go to line thirty-nine and see how much money I was losing, losing specifically on nurses. With TESA, it's just a mystery, but they just, there's, it's not transparent.
Well, on that line, say a nurse at the high school, you know, there's a lot more students there than say there would be at Monticraw or Castle or some of elementary, so do we ever have any pushback on that? Uh, one nurse covered, you know, six hundred students versus a, one nurse covered three hundred?
We do, but, um, you know, we, we, they shuffle around, if one of them's out, you know, they shuffle around and help and support one another that way, and if there's extra need, we'll pull... And if there's extra need, we'll pull somebody from another school to come help, uh, and that's dependent on what those schools' needs are. So, uh, and, you know, some days are more than others, uh, you just, more, more kids doesn't always equate more visits. Uh, it just depends on, you know, the needs and, and the sickness that's going around at that time. And again, the nurse supervisor also helps with that too, when they're particularly, she's able to go and sub and to help in those situations. Okay, um, continuing on, um, bottom of page six, uh, just all the supplies, materials, and, um, benefits for those positions. Moving on to page seven, uh, other student support, this is seventy-two, one-thirty, uh, that are guidance personnel and clerical personnel. Those are guidance counselors on, uh, that's a sub fund one-twenty-three.
Yeah, only scatter scouts, is there one per school?
There is not necessarily one per school, there's, there's one that goes to the four county schools, they trade off days. And there's one that goes to Findlay and Winnebago Park. And then there's. That's right, that's right, there's one at Winnebago, one at Findlay, and there's.
And one goes to Dolan.
Right, there's two that share two schools, that's correct, and then there's one, there's three at the middle school and five, four? Four at the high school.
Thirteen total, is that right?
Yes, no, no.
Fourteen?
Eleven? Eleven, yeah. So, and it's, it's basically by numbers, um, and, you know, the number of students that they serve. So, um, ballparking about three hundred per school that is there, that they serve. Salaries and benefits for those folks, uh, down on, in the middle of the page, seventy-two, one-thirty, uh, sub fund four seventy-one, objects not in use, um, three hundred thousand, that's our software, um, it's a lot of our, that, Edgenuity, that's not Edgenuity now, it's, uh, where are we going? iReady, thank you, iReady, yeah, iReady, um, Mastery Connect, yes, we're, we're changing some software. It was what was Edgenuity, a map testing, so we're, we're switching to different, uh, different vendors now, uh, but that's what those funds are for. Edgenuity part of it, we still have some e-dynamic in there, uh, there's still some bits and pieces, but we're changing overall to our, uh, benchmark testing. And the reason that is, is just better data. We found over the years that what we were using is getting farther and farther away to reliability for our teachers. All right, before I move on, any questions about seventy-two, one-thirty? Okay, seventy-two, two-ten, bottom of page seven, um, this is, uh, regular instruction, this is our curriculum supervisors, librarians, some clerical personnel, educational assistants. Down through there, there are benefits, travel funds, library books, in-service and staff development funds.
The salaries in line one are, in line one oh five, that's for two positions, correct?
Yes, that's, uh, that's Ms. Fresh and Dr. Butcher. Any other thoughts or questions on seventy-two, two-ten?
That's for the librarians at each school, right?
That's correct.
Every school has one?
Not, not of one of their own, but it's just like guidance counselors, the, the ones where they share a guidance, they share a library. And again, those are kept, uh, on student ratio, so that everybody has the same ratio of students, in reason. Okay, moving along to seventy-two, two-twenty, a special education program, um, supervisors, salary, then we have, uh, those are two, two school psychologists in line one twenty-four, uh, some assessment personnel, do testing for us, clerical. And then benefits, some travel money. So, um, not much, but a little, you could probably go to Quebec on that, so. Other contracted services, is that, is that our?
OT and P T services.
OT and P T, yes, thank you, that forty-five thousand, it's three ninety, three ninety-nine sub fund, that's OT and P T that we pay out of that fund. And that, uh, that is our, that's seventy-two, two-twenty, any questions there? Willing to answer, I'm just gonna keep moving for the time's sake. Seventy-two, two-thirty, vocational education program, uh, line one oh five is the supervisor, that's Mr. Ward's salary. Uh, we have two secretaries in line one sixty-one, salaries and benefits, other contracted services, Miss Sally, what is three ninety-nine there? T C A, yeah, so we, we contract with T C A, they pay a portion of the salaries and we pay portions of salaries for a couple, for a number of hours.
Teachers.
Yes.
That welding, is that the welding teacher and?
Weldings, one, nursing, no, we took those over, did we? There's two, I don't remember which of the other one is right now. Megatronics, yes, Tristan Roberts.
Thank you, I was trying to think of that.
Megatronics, that's correct, thank you. All right, thank you. All right, so any objection, moving on to seventy-two, two-fifty, technology, uh, supervisors, salary, we have two data personnel in line one twenty-one. Actually, that's not true, that's, uh, line one twenty-one is our data supervisor, uh, that's Dunn, one eighty-nine is our lab techs. And we have benefits, some consulting fees, maintenance and repair services for our technology. Continues on page nine. Objects not in use, three fifty, Miss Sally?
E and A.
That's E and A, correct, thank you, we talked about that. Okay, good work.
Yeah.
Um, thank you, um, travel. Other objects not in use, four seventy-one, Sally, do you remember what that one is?
Yeah, it's, um, technology software.
Technology software, which is, oh, that, was that part of our A Ps and?
That would be a part, I don't know what bunch of those are.
One fifty-seven, one fifty-seven, one fifty-seven.
So, that's gonna be things like, just software we use within our department, so bomb guard, hero, things that we use to help work on computers remotely.
Is that any more firewall stuff too, or?
Um, that's gonna, yes, it would be, yes, that would be the filter. And sign area, um, cybersecurity pieces.
And it's seven ninety, other equipment, two fifteen, is that Chromebooks?
Would you revisit again the supervisor director and this, the employees, how many employees are for that, the supervisor? One of lines one oh five, one twenty-one?
One oh five, yeah, one oh five is the supervisor, that's Ms. Russ's position, one twenty-one is the data processing personnel, that's Darla Dunn. Uh, then other salaries and wages, um, that's two techs, and is that our?
There should be the co-op as well.
The co-op, we have a co-op student as well from T C A that works with us as well, so it's three positions, two and a half.
Thank you.
Is Emily in any of those?
Well, she will get next to it. That was something federal used to do, and I was, reshuffled that.
Any other questions about technology?
And that's two, two and a half?
Yes. Uh, Donell Matthews.
Josh Moon.
And who?
Josh Moon, and then the co-op, uh, from T C A, and so, the, 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 Jaden, that will be with us maybe six months, and then I'll be the new one.
Okay, um, okay, it takes us to the middle of page nine, um, that's seventy-two, two-ninety, and on behalf payments, uh, for O P E B. Uh, Mr. Markham said that's just an accounting thing, it's an in and out money, so it's just showing it on paper that it comes in and goes back out, so.
Other post-education benefits, is that what O P E B stands for?
What's that?
Other post-education benefits, is that what O P E B stands for? Huh?
Employment.
Employment benefits, sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Markham would have to explain it to you, because we do it every year, and I've never understood it, but it's just on paper that it comes in and goes back out. Seventy-two, three-ten, Board of Education, um, this, uh, one ninety-one is the millions of dollars that we pay the school board members. Nine ninety-six is in-service training for board members, uh, benefits. Payments to retirees. That's the insurance benefit, is that correct, Miss Sally?
Yeah.
Okay. For they. Right, if they retire with us after thirty years, and then they can recoup that fifteen hundred dollars to sixty-five. Other fringe benefits, can you remind me of that one, Miss Sally? Two ninety-nine. Okay, thank you. Um, audit services. Dues and memberships. Myreality insurance.
Is that dues and membership, is that our T S B policy dues and all of the things that go on there?
Mm-hmm.
And their legal services and all that training?
Workman's comp. Any questions on seventy-two, three-ten? All right, if not, page ten, um, seventy-two, three-twenty, Director of Schools, um, line one oh one, that's my salary. Benefits, communication package, dues and memberships, and travel. That was instituted a two percent raise by contract, is, is all the adjustment there. Seventy-two, four-ten, Office of the Principals, uh, one oh four is principal salaries.
Do we have any?
We have six. Twelve? That's what I said, eight? Head principals. Assistants are, are in another line, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, they're down in one thirty-nine, I'm sorry, eight, eight head principals.
Oh, damn.
And it's just elementary principals?
No, there's eight total, one per school for head principals, then there are four assistants, well, really three assistants at the high school, because Mr. Ward's paid out vocational, and there's two assistants at the middle school, and now we've added an assistant training position at Findlay. Well, I'm sorry, one, where the part come, I apologize, yeah.
So, how many assistants was that on the other?
Three or five? Eight.
But we added a, a training position?
Yeah, then when that eight is a training position at Findlay.
How was that paid last year, was it in the budget, was it?
We, we had it.
I thought we were paying them their teacher, I thought they were getting paid their teacher salary.
They are.
The one at Findlay, that were used to teach her, Miss Howard, just her regular teaching, and, uh, the one in, in there, and, and, you know, they didn't have his salary.
The difference is, is though we're paying somebody to do their job that they left, so, Miss Howard, we hired a teacher at the high school to do her job last year, and so, um, Mr. Hicks was just chosen from the middle school to do that position next year, and so we'll have to hire someone to do his job at the mid, middle school next year.
Have we done got that job, Bill?
The assistant principal training, yes, yes, Kyle, Kyle Hicks.
No, I'm the same teacher that took.
No, we're still looking for that. Um, there's secretaries line there. Don't know how many secretaries that is, Sally, do you have any idea? Office of the Principal. Eight, one for school, one per school. And then benefits, communication is mainly cell phones for principals, some, each, some, each one of those has a cellphone, um, at each school, each, each principal and A P. Any questions about seventy-two, four-ten? All right, uh, seventy-two, five-ten, Fiscal Services, one oh five, that's, uh, Miss Alley. One oh, one sixty-one, uh, is Kim Sims, one sixty-two is Lesam Curry. Salary benefits.
McCurry, you can?
Yes. Office supplies and incidentals, administrative equipment, rounds out fiscal services. Middle of page eleven, seventy-two, six-ten, Operation of Plant, Custodial Personnel, uh, one million, two hundred fifty-five thousand, five hundred. We have a person, you have a custodian number, Miss Alley? So, thirty-six total at this point, thank you. We're adding a half, we are adding a half a position, a four-hour position at Bondi Croft, when they add, it's twenty thousand square feet more, and custodial managers didn't feel like the staff could handle that much of an addition without adding some, some hours to that. Benefits, you see our, uh, our electricity, our utilities have remained pretty steady, um, proud to say we've been pretty steady, rather energy efficient over the past few years. Boiler insurance makes me mad, we have to pay eighty-five hundred dollars just to tell them we have a boiler. No offense. Um, building and contents insurance, uh, is up a little bit as well. Any questions about Operation of Plant?
Other salaries and wages for that one?
Oh, thank you, yes, one eighty-nine?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Operation of Plant. Oh, that's Roger's position, yes, thank you. Yeah, one eighty-nine in that category, that's Mr. Thorpe's position, thank you. All right, seventy-two, six-twenty, bottom of page eleven, Maintenance of Plant, um, maintenance personnel, we still have five really hard-working people that, uh, take care of everything, and there are benefits. Got some money for maintenance, repair service, pest control, materials and supplies. Uh, bottom of that, seven oh one, it says Administration Equipment, um, that is gonna, our match for that COPS grant that we mentioned earlier, uh, where we got approximately almost five hundred thousand dollars, but we have to match about a hundred and fifty of that in the ballpark, so that's where that money comes in there for our portion, again, we were hoping to have safety funds that was gonna contribute to that. Uh, we also had somewhere we might have passed it already, portion of a, uh, we paid for one S R O at the high school, an additional S R O outside of what the Sheriff's Department gets, um, we didn't get safety money this year, oddly enough, after all that happened last year. Ma, maintenance equipment on seven seventeen. Any question? I'm on the bottom of page eleven, Maintenance of Plant. Now I'm on the top of page twelve. Seventy-two, seven-ten, Transportation. One oh-five is the supervisor's salary, transportation supervisors. One forty-two are two mechanics.
Who's supervisor, who's the-
Mr. Alley.
Or Alley.
Randy Alley. Robert Hawkins and Eugene Pinkston are excellent mechanics. Line one forty-six, Bus Drivers. I think we have thirty-four. Is that correct, Ms. Alley? Or some sped?
Yeah, three in the federal.
Yeah, so, but thirty-four, thirty-five? Okay. Clerical Personnel, that's Ms. Summers. Other salaries and wages, one eighty-nine, Ms. Alley, is that our?
About sixty thousand is for bus attendants. We have, I believe, five. And then field trips.
Okay. Yeah, so that one eighty-nine, she said it was for field trips and for bus attendance. We have some folks that ride the bus to help with student behaviors on buses. Salary benefits.
I never had to have that when I was going to school.
No.
My mother made me sit right beside her when she drove.
We have cameras on the buses and they'll still tell us that they didn't do it. Two-ten, Diesel Fuel, that has remained unchanged from last year, gasoline, lubricants, all in the same ballpark. Vehicle parts, as we said, up just a little bit. Insurance up, of course. Transportation Equipment at the bottom of that category is three school buses. We had two scheduled, we had one, as you know, that was damaged this year and wrecked, so we received some money back on that, I think about seventy-seven thousand, somewhere in that ballpark, that we want to put towards a third bus to replace that. And then one maintenance vehicle is in that number as well. Any questions about Transportation?
Just curiosity, just drove by a few minutes ago and there was a bucket truck sitting in the parking lot. Is that schools?
Yes.
Wow. I thought we had one.
We have a bucket truck, we have a skid steer, we have a backhoe, yeah, we have, yeah.
Well, we're doing good.
Yeah, Ms. Alley's been good to find good deals on those things. We were spending a lot more money outsourcing that to other people and we have-
No doubt.
We have good people that can utilize them. All right. Food Service at this point. Mr. Markham, do you want to, do we want to segue into that or would you rather just continue on and finish out?
If you just want to check that, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll just keep going then, we'll skip over that and go to seventy-three, three hundred, bottom of page twelve. That's the Family Resource Center. First line, one eighty-nine, that's Beverly Drumberger's salary. Benefits beneath that. Little bit of travel funds, materials and supplies. And as Ms. Alley said, other charges, I think last year, Ms. Drumberger secured about eleven thousand dollars worth of grants for her program, so. That's seventy-three, three hundred. Seventy-three, four hundred, Early Childhood Education, this is pre-K. So teachers there. This is where we had two title teachers and aides that were being paid from title funds that would now be, have to be picked up. If we're going to have those programs, they're going to have to be picked up by G P.
Are they the sped ones or are they just regular?
No, no, regular. We can shuffle that around, I mean, I won't label which one's which, but I guess, but we can move that around, but they're not sped.
How many pre-Ks teachers were there, right now?
How many total?
We're pre-K, you have five pre-K, two used to be titled one. Total, six.
Yeah.
That's what I was trying to say, because she said used to be titled one, sped.
Is there separate?
Gotcha, I see what you're saying.
All right, so benefits, salaries and salary benefits and then supplies and materials, finish out that category. Seventy-six hundred, or seventy-six, one hundred, bottom of page thirteen, this is capital outlays, building projects. We have some engineering service money in there and then building improvements. I didn't bring my list in here of what all we're doing, Ms. Alley, but we're planning to do. We're doing, Ms. Alley, you can help me, we're doing upgrades at bathrooms at the high schools. Six bathrooms. We're doing, we didn't put bleacher money in yet.
Put in, we put in four bathrooms at the water.
We're doing, we're doing work to connect Bondicraft, Oldton. Maybe, yeah. No, we are.
What about our Doyle Air Conditioning?
Doyle, Air Conditioning, that's in there. Air Conditioning is in the Doyle gym because those units had gone out.
Always your ceiling parking lots and chemical works. Some work on the science lab.
Yeah, there's some work in the high school science lab that's going to be taking place over the next two, three years. And then we're also doing some H V A C work that'll come out of a different fund at the vocational building. Air handlers.
Air handlers.
Yeah.
For their actual original equipment.
Yeah. Nineteen seventy? So there's a number of the things that we'll be doing this summer, or starting with this budget. And that takes us to the end, it takes us to page fourteen. All that totaled up is forty million, three hundred ninety thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars. So the number over. The revenue budget that we talked about earlier was three million, one hundred ninety-six dollars, two hundred and forty-two dollars. So that is where the budget stands. You know, it's higher than where we were last year as far as our deficit would run. Am I confident that we can get there? Think we can, for the current model, but I can't say for sure. T S is very fickle and don't know what other unknowns are out there, but that's where we are. We can talk about the budget, we can talk about if we want to amend, if we want to make cuts and where those might be. I can make suggestions, but it's going to be hard to cut big numbers without getting into people and programs. And I feel strongly that we are not a very top-heavy district. We don't have, every one of these supervisors wears lots and lots of hats. We don't have a lot of overage, we don't have a lot of extra teachers and personnel. And so any cuts that we made that are above and beyond the regular program will be, I think, felt in schools and in the classrooms. So that I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Drumberger. So. Board Members now's chance for us to go back and ask any questions on any of the programs that we've given. Opportunity to do that as we went through, but obviously, as we think through this and study numbers that are in front of us, there's certainly opportunity to come back as things may need to circle back and revisit. I did some rough calculation on the budget just to try to put in perspective. Out of that, the proposed budget of forty million. I came up with seventy-two percent of that number is actually going to students in, as far as instructional personnel and then also the support. Just trying to break that down into, give some perspective of, you know, what of this budget, what's actually been given back to the students and the program. That leaves us with approximately twenty-eight percent of that number that consists of just being able to provide the educational setting. The buildings, administrators and things of that nature. I'm not sure if that's helpful to you, but it's something that I've just gone through in my mind, just saying. End of the day, what is of this budget, what percentage of that is going, is going to be felt by the students? And that's, that's the number I came up with, it's unaudited, so you might, you might want to come back and review that yourself, but. It, again, trying to just figure out what, what we're, of this money, what's actually going, being impacted by the, how the students are being impacted through this monies we're spending. Or is being proposed. The calculation that I came up with as far as the budget. The percentage, our budget is over our revenue, I came up with eight and a half percent. The forty, forty point four million over the thirty-seven million in revenues. So. That's just, again, I figured that, that came up with on, as we went through this.
Ms. Felton, yours is out of the federal, right, or part of it was?
Part of it, sixty-five percent is.
What was it?
The federal budget, so only thirty-five percent is federal, do you think?
But what category did you fall in? Or you're not on here?
No.
Okay. I was just writing everybody's name and I didn't have yours no more.
Somebody go through it, well, like open it and look it out.
I just didn't have you no more, but I knew part of yours was federal.
Yes, it was already given this.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Drumberger.
No.
Is she on here anywhere?
No, Ms. Alley, do you know where her portion is, Ms. Felton's portion?
Half of her salary is paying out of her regular.
Okay. Okay, she's down at the regular, okay, gotcha. You blended, okay.
So one of those two thirteen, she's one of those two, two seventeen.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I don't think I have you down either, or you.
What is, or you?
I think I have her best.
Hers is federal, I'm going to figure it out. It's part, I covered part of the title two and then her other part's covered the twenty-first century one.
Twenty-first century, so it's not on there, it's under teachers and federal, okay.
So, just clarity, General Purpose Fund, we're contributing to the program, but it's being matched or supplemented by federal funds. So in that grant, federal typically is going to have, they'll pay so much, but locally, you have to pay a portion.
It's like my federal, I've covered title one budget is sixty-five percent of my salary, but I also do title two, title four, title five, the Esters, the, all the extra COVID, and that thirty-five percent of G P covers all those additional things I do besides just title one.
Okay.
Okay. And now it's the same ratio out here, Mr. Fresh?
Half of mine comes out of twenty-first century, there are two grants for twenty-first century, so one covers four, one covers three. So mine comes three parts out of one and four parts out of the other, half. Half of my salary comes three and four parts out of that one. Very complicated.
But yours is all federal?
Of course, all federal, which is too different.
Doesn't that too different, right, just, okay. Now, do we have any more that's out of federal besides Ms. Felton and Ms. Fresh? I think I've got all the rest of supervisors down.
You paid several people.
And structural coaches and some international teachers and aides in those classrooms.
Okay, that's all federal?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we will have, have federal of the federal budgets present in use.
So most of the else is federal.
So.
Federal budgets are still working all by mistake, Dr. Thompson and us go, it goes back to before. We've submitted, sent up corrections, we've sent it back, so, we've sent it back to them, so it's just back before they're getting up.
And, and we don't, we won't have that before we have to approve all these, right?
No, that's correct. So, Ms. Felton, just for clarity, to see if this is how I understand it works. The federal monies come to the state, the state is the recipient of those federal funds and so you're having to work with the state on that federal distribution. So even though the monies come, even though the monies come from Washington, you have to coordinate with Nashville on how those monies are, what you're, on distribution. The state has some say in how that money's distributed. And that's, I think, one of the things we just need to keep in mind, yeah, they could, at the end of the day, the Fed will say, here's a portion, states, you determine how you're going to distribute this federal portion. It's not state money, it's federal money, but the state still gets to choose who gets what.
And it's like, G P is picking up like two pre-K positions and it's the title one funding was cut because the Fed's giving money to the state. The state distributes it out. The federal government audited the state, monitored them, said you didn't calculate everything correct, so then they took some money away. So my budget is very fluid, and Dr. Thompson's is too. Throughout the year, we may get more, we have made us take away, we never know what we're working with.
Because you've got double-screwed meat dealing with two different branches. So you say the title one for the pre-K got taken away.
Well, they just cut so much funds and I had to decide what we cut, I just-
So we've got, there's the things we could cut, not the pre-K, is what you're saying, right?
Well, G P is picking up that pre-K, so we're not actually cutting, but yeah, just someone just cut my funds and I had to decide, uh, that, here's the amount that I had to do with that in any pre-K budget, so it was easy to say, title can't pay for that.
So.
It could be the same as saying, I had some interregional, we could cut interregional, keep pre-K, but interregional, you had to have those, so G P would have to pick it up.
So the Educational Instructional Coach, Instructional Coaches, what do they come out of?
Those, most of those are federal. Those would come out of different federal funds, it just depends on how my money rolls in. I don't even know right now, title five, I haven't heard anything about how much money to get to title five. They, they spread out in bunches, all my different titles, title one, title two, title four, and title five, I want to type this cover your. Some of them are split between two different things, it just, it depends on what their job is and what fund I can take that out of.
But, but what you said, can you, instead of taking the pre-K, would you take the coaches?
Yes. Well, depending what category it is.
Okay, well, that's what I was saying.
I'm only going to cut my title one to get, cut the most, only pay for half of the coach.
Yeah, there's certain stipulations about what the funding could be used for, but in theory, yes, you can supplement one thing for something else, but it's just in the end, what are you willing to give up? And I, you know, I've, I made a list of things that are above and beyond, but it's not an extensive list. I mean, we just don't, we do a lot with little and, I mean, I, there's nothing on this list that I think, oh, yeah, we could cut this and we wouldn't feel it, there's just, there's, I think our teachers would, I think we have, I know, you know, academic coaches, for example, I mean, we've made huge strides with our academic coaches. I mean, it's been so valuable, the work that they've done, not just our new teachers, but- teachers, but with veteran teachers, as we've changed curriculum, it's just, they're invaluable, and, you know, I would, I would hate to see them go, of course, we don't wanna lose pre-K either, but, so, it's just, it's tough, for sure.
Well, you know, I personally think every child in White County ought to be able to do pre-K, I'm big on pre-K. I mean, I think it's a shame that you have to pick and choose who gets to go to pre-K.
So, for some of us that've been on the board for, for a while, I think we've recalled in, in settings like this where we've had monies that have been made available to us and spend that, but with changing in the funding model, and seems like there's a lot of ambiguity from the state on how that, the, the allocation is, is ultimately ended up with us, but then you accept some of these programs from, with federal funds and we put things in, in place, but as they giveth, they can also taketh away, and the challenge that we as a local district find is that if we continue the program, then there, it has to then become part of our, our funding model and how we, we fund it from, from our, our general purpose school fund.
I've been on this board ten years, and this is, I think, the very first time that we've ever talked about cutting any kind of salaries or any kind of programs in my ten years on the board.
So, we're in, we're in, in a unique, a unique position, because what we'll come back and discuss on Thursday is, is basically how we would operate going forward next calendar year with a deficit of approximately three million dollars. I, I do want to just express appreciation to administrators, director, Mr. Markham, Ms. Alley for managing to where we can put money back in our, our general purpose school fund. Mr. Markham, I haven't seen that number in a while, but do you have, are you able to give us some indication of what the fund balance and that, our fund balance in general purpose school fund will be the end of this fiscal year?
Well, at the end of last fiscal year, it was just about twelve and a half million, and that was taking two million out for cash flow purposes, if you guys remember that, we moved two million for cash flow purposes into federal programs for the Esther project for, for Bonnie Croft, so we could cash flow that, that will revert back to GP, we'll put that back in, so roughly fourteen and a half million last, last, at the end of fiscal year 2020. And we're on track to, to do pretty well this year as well, so.
So, after you, after we take care of that budget amendment, putting those funds back in, paying ourselves back from the, the Esther funds that we're receiving, so we go on and start that, that project, we'll flow that back in, that puts us roughly at fourteen million?
Fifteen million.
Okay, so we'll say fourteen and a half, fifteen million, expect to put a little bit more in after everything settles from this fiscal year, so from a, from a, from a standpoint of the, the districts and our funding, we could absorb a little bit of budget deficit, assuming the worst, assuming that, you know, that we, you know, that we really are, we end up at this, you know, this much over, chances are, based on history and, and the performance of the way districts operated, we, we don't reach that number, but at least we understand, we understand where, where we're at with the funds, so we could operate at deficit, we have operated deficit, we could end up the fiscal year with a deficit, we wouldn't have to worry about running out of money, but it is something, if this trend continues, then it can, you know, it can impact the, the amount of services that we can provide to our students.
Well, are, are we thinking that the next year, some of the funds may increase?
Yeah, I, I certainly, that's gonna be one of my main goals this year, is lobbying for such, I've reached out to all of our federal congressmen and women and explained, one thing that really is hurting us right now in White County is, is our special ed funding, it just hasn't changed, it hasn't kept pace with the need, you know, we can go back twenty years when we started doing inclusion and they said that, you know, our spent numbers were gonna go down, they were gonna decrease, that hasn't happened, or they've, they've increased exponentially, and this new, the new laws of third and fourth grade retention have caused more and more people to seek sped classification so they can avoid that, that pitfall, and so it's only just increased, those numbers increased, but the funding has not, and so, I think they did shuffle a little bit of money to Dr. Thompson, to the federal money, maybe like seventy-eight, seventy-nine thousand dollars this year, but they took away two hundred and thirteen in, in other, so, you know, they're just kinda getting us in both, in both situations, so, that's just one example, I'm gonna be lobbying for more of those funds, I think that I'm hearing this from other directors, they're gonna be lobbying with their legislators to, to get some of these changes, certainly safety money, for crying out loud, why would you cut safety money after all that Tennessee went through last year and certainly Nashville, so, yeah, so, yeah, those are all things that'll be, that we'll be talking to legislators about, and hopefully we can get some of those turned in the right direction.
So if we didn't necessarily cut all three million of this, is there, are we thinking that next year we may come up with more money to offset this?
Yeah, so, my recommendation right now, I mean, I've given a list of things that I thought were, you know, kinda above and beyond to make our program run well, but there's nothing on there that I think is just fluff, there's nothing on there that I don't think wouldn't hurt, there's nothing on there I don't think that people wouldn't miss, that our students wouldn't miss, and our teachers wouldn't miss, so, I'm going into, I've offered this budget because this is what I'd like to move forward with, with the understanding that we know this is gonna be playing it closer to the vest than what we have in the past, I'm confident that with the amount of money that we've been able to put back traditionally, that we will be in that boat again, but, you know, we can also watch our expenditures through the year and, and, you know, like we've always done, we've overestimated our, our expenditures, underestimated our revenues, and with that formula, we'll see where we get, you know, if, if, if it winds up that we, as, as Chairman Young said, if that we fulfill the entire budget, we have the ability, the cash to, to support that, but obviously, some really serious cuts would have to be made at that point. I would, I would hate at this point to make decisions, you know, and make the cuts that were gonna adversely affect our kids, affect our program, our ability to do what makes White County schools great, so, but I'm, I'm willing to look at those things with the board and let's make changes.
Yes, Michelle.
There's multiple questions here, on the last, on the last page fourteen, if we covered it, I'm not understanding totally, I, I see our total estimated expenditures, and then I see our estimated amount of revenue that is less, and that's three million, what is the fund balance that's expected on June, July the first of six million, and then estimated ending fund balance on June the thirtieth of two million nine hundred thousand, and then how does that play into, if I understand, the two hundred thousand dollars that we're really expecting to be short, is, is that where that comes from? I mean, can you explain that part of page fourteen and then this additional page here titled, that we had added tonight?
Yeah, so, so on the column, if you look at that last page, column one, the beginning estimated fund balance is listed at zero, and so if we went back and put in the beginning, the twenty twenty-three fund balance, that number would be twelve, twelve and a half million, and then those numbers would just carry forward from there, so, that's, that's the, the difference there, is that, that's the beginning fund balance number is just on in there, I think.
I'm confused.
Yeah, I'm still, I'm, so, so what should we be concerned with, like the bottom line there, estimated end fund balance in June the thirtieth of two million nine hundred three thousand?
No, that's not, that wouldn't be what we would project the fund balance to be at that time. So, if, if everything occurred just like, just like we had it here, we would be projecting an estimated fund balance of... Roughly twelve million.
Well, I know you're thinking what I would call savings, okay, or whatever is in the bank right there, but I was just curious to see what this, those three statements right there meant without, but I guess you can't.
Well, I mean, it's all, 'cause it's all fund balance, so.
Is that where you was talking about the twelve, but it's really fourteen and a half?
Fourteen, because we just moved two of there.
Okay, okay, I, I'm catching on, okay.
So, Mr. Markham, if, basically, that fund balance that we're starting with, that's not reflected in what we're seeing here.
Right, yeah.
And, so, we're, we're not putting that number in, that's the reason why I asked the question, approximately, what is the fund balance, and we're saying, we're projecting that be about fourteen point five. So, in our minds, what I think, and Mr. Markham, you correct me if I'm wrong, in our minds, what we would need to think about is that if every budget item, and we spent exactly as it's projected here, then we would expect at the end, this time in July first, twenty twenty-five, our fund balance, rather than being fourteen and a half million, would be eleven million.
That's the strong part of the deficit.
We would, we would be pulling off that fund balance. Ms. Howard, I understand what you're saying, 'cause in my mind, I have a hard time thinking about that being, you know, a savings or reserved account, but there is no savings account, it's a balance number that just continues to move.
That, that two point nine oh three is just basically the difference of what you're saying, the twelve to fourteen, area of fourteen and a half.
Well, it's just a, it's a byproduct of the, of the budgets, the budget amendments that we've done this year, and then the departmental requests there, so, really, if you, if you just look, you don't have to look at those last two numbers right there.
Well, Mr. Chairman, what I was trying to do, I was trying to find the numbers here that coincided with this additional sheet right here, two hundred and thirteen thousand that could possibly be done away, whatever, so.
This, this sheet?
This.
No, no, that's, that's, I was trying to make, I was trying to come up with how, this figure right here is where we need to...
What we need to cut?
Yeah, that's what I was looking at, is this what we need to reconcile before next meeting, that two hundred something thousand.
Well, that's been added back in, I mean, that two thirteen, it's been picked up, it's in that budget, so.
So it's on these numbers?
It's in those numbers, yes, we've, we've picked that up, I mean, that, we haven't cut anything, so.
But instead of staying in a hole.
But instead of coming from title, from federal, it's now coming from state locals, coming from this budget, so it's in there, nothing's been cut yet, but something would have to be cut if you wanna recoup that two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, then something else is gonna be cut if you wanna keep pre-K, so.
So...
I mean, not necessarily, I mean, you could keep everything, but just know that our, our number going in is gonna be at forty thousand, forty million now, excuse me, forty million.
Forty thousand, tell me.
Yeah, sorry.
And we haven't got, took capture yet, but it's, it's.
It's pretty, it's pretty quick, yeah, it's pretty.
It's a unit type, so.
Well, we'll, we'll make sure we've covered, you know, to everybody's satisfaction on this general purpose fund.
Ms. Young, Mr. Markham and I just had a little sidebar while y'all were having their...
And you solved our problem?
No, no, no.
You solved the three point five million.
No, I'm just, I'm just, so, he said we got roughly twelve and a half million dollars now in our general purpose school fund, and we're going to, and we're gonna transfer two million, that's gonna put us at fourteen and a half to fifteen million. He said earlier that in twenty twenty-four, we're gonna add a million and a half back, so that's gonna put us around sixteen and a half to seventeen million dollars in our general purpose budget, if we add a million and a half back this year, so.
That's a strong if, right?
That, I mean, I mean, that's a big strong if.
And then that, does that mean, okay, after next school year, that sixteen will go down to three million?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
If we did exactly what we did this year, and we're putting a million and a half back, we're saying here, there's gonna be three million, we're gonna be three million short.
We'd just be a million.
So we'd be a million and a half short, right, and that's if everything goes exactly like that, and this year, we put the same amount back, but that's not to say that we
We'd not have a million next year?
We might save, we might save two million next year, it might be less than that, but we might spend more too, I mean, but it, it's, it's just hard to predict, but these are, that's why they're estimates, and that's why we budget.
And, not that, Ms. Felton, we wanna put a budget together based on, you hope you get a grant, but you, but you have, your team has demonstrated, you're going after grants, and you're applying for grants, and we occasionally win some of those grants too, you can't predict those, what's coming out, but there, somebody in your team may pick up on something that say, hey, this right here, we could use to offset some budget items because it falls into a program scope of what a grant is.
Most grants are not gonna cover salaries, so.
But it, but if it helps on instructional supplies, if it helps on instructional supplies or something like that?
Anything that could be in general purpose, right?
Yes, and then the things that I've listed, but why we talk about salaries or programs is because when you're talking six figures, you've gotta get into salaries and programs, you know, you can't cut enough crayons and paper to really amount to a million dollars, so, you're, you know, when you're talking about those kinds of numbers, you're talking about positions, and, you know, there's things you can do, but they're, they're just all uncomfortable, you know, cutting things that teachers have asked for, loading up class sizes, and making sure there's close to twenty-five in every class, rather than close to fifteen, I mean, those are just, those are all things you can do to save money, but they're, they're uncomfortable, they're not popular, but they may be necessary if you wanna.
So I, I got a question, so, Ms. Seeking Howard was the assistant vice principal or however, I don't remember, so, did we create a new job for her to go to that we are paying her salary for?
That's a good question.
Because she was a teacher.
So technically, yes, but we're not paying for it, so, we have grant funds that Sabrina Stafford is gonna move into a grant-funded position, that where she'll be at the middle school all year long, so, Ms. Howard's gonna move into Sabrina's position that was already being funded as a coach, so, we gained a position that's being paid for with grant funds for just this one year, and, so we didn't increase that way.
So we gra, we gained a position for this one year for Ms. Howard, or Ms.?
It's really for Ms. Stafford, Ms. Howard's gonna move into Ms. Stafford's position, so.
So then next year, we could have a problem with her because we could lose her grant funding?
Correct, but we anticipate some administrative moves where there would be an opening, so then we would shuffle all of that and not have to, we would lose the grant, but we'd have an opening we could move them into.
And then if we keep this position for Mr. Hicks, then we've got that same problem next year with finding a place for him to go back?
Again, I think, well, he's guaranteed to go back to his position, so.
Okay, he is, okay.
Yeah, so if, if we hired somebody new, they know that's a one-year guarantee, and that could be.
So Ms. Howard was guaranteed to go back to her?
Correct.
She just chose not, can they choose not to?
Well, well, no, we had another opportunity that we needed, that we worked out for her, so.
Thank you, I was just trying to figure it out.
Okay.
That's a really good question.
And next year, we're gonna have to figure out how to fund it.
I mean, you know, I don't understand the property tax issue in our county, as many new subdivisions are going in, but, you know, that makes no sense to me.
As much building's going in, many people is moving in, why is it, it's White, it's been this way. I don't see.
That's a meeting that happens on the third Monday.
And I'll be there.
All right, so we've covered general purpose, general purpose school funds, do we wanna have any more discussion on that, or we?
Uh, I, I, I want, right here was some of these proposals, it says a Title I paid for half assistant, what's that, half of an assistant?
Well, half of an assistant's salary, like we said, those ta, the title funds, they can, we can pay for a number of different things, as long as the rules allow, but if she only had, you know, say fifteen thousand dollars, and, and that could pay for part of the salary, if they would pay for part of it, GP would pick up the other half, so.
And it's been that way for years, so, one school way, it works down on my page, on spiral page, I give so much per every little become student, and it's been that way for years at Northville, I have a full teacher and a half of my age, and then GP would pay I have a full teacher and a half of an aide and then GP just pays that other half. They have a pain in that classroom.
Or an aide, entire aide.
It's a full person. Full person, she's just being paid by two different buckets.
I didn't, I didn't know if that meant she just worked half the time.
It's just she paid the two.
I thought she might have just been working a few hours or half the time.
We do have some, you know, part-time, like special custodians, things like that. But normally when you're looking at it from a payment standpoint, it's just how are they paid?
So if we're going to think about, you know, this or, you know, from that sheet or what we might do, are we going to talk about it tonight or are we going to talk about it Thursday night?
So, so
I think we need to talk about it if we're planning on approving.
Well, when we go in, when we go into Thursday night, okay, then we'll go through and we'll have opportunity to deliberate on the budget. So right now we're just getting information, getting our questions answered. And then, then Thursday night when we'll, we will take the information, everybody's thoughts on the budget and we'll have discussion and debate that. And then if the board chooses, we'll, we'll take action on it. So that's, that's what Thursday night will be about.
Mr. Chairman, can I make one note?
Sure.
Just to be clear, that, that Ms. Felton brought to you about the two hundred thirteen thousand, that's, that's been addressed. It's in the budget. So nothing's been cut, I mean, that's, it's, it's in the budget that you have before you. It's just if you want to recoup that, then something has to go. And you know, it's not an exhaustive list that I've provided, but when I've thought about things that are outside of classroom teachers or, you know, just the aides that we have to have and the custodians and the nurses, I mean, we could, I guess, I mean, we could reduce nurses, we could reduce SROs, we could do a lot of things. But, but those are, those are all decisions that we have to make, you know, how, what, what do you want to do to try and recoup? Not just two hundred thirteen thousand, but do you want to get to a number that's closer to the deficit we ran last year?
And, and like I say, you know more about what's mandatory we have to have than probably we do. So if you wanted to run some more scenarios like this before our next meeting, that, because every one of this says pre-K, I'm going to have a hard time cutting pre-K. So
But I think, I think if, correct me if I'm wrong, but just want to think, see if I'm understanding this correctly. We're, we're not suggesting cutting pre-K, the cuts would come from other items. Is that my correct, am I correct in that?
Well, what I proposed is we haven't cut anything. I mean, but it's, but if you want to get a more balanced budget, then some things would have to be cut. So pre-K only came into the conversation because we need two hundred thirteen thousand. The easiest way for Ms. Felton to kind of say, okay, how do we get two hundred thousand? Well, if I cut these two pre-Ks, that's enough money right there. I mean, she could have went through and nickled and dimed everybody's paper and crayon money until, but it would have been a lot of different cuts and things. So just to make it easy, that was just a quick suggestion. If we picked that up, you know, that was an easier accounting method for us just to pick that up and say, okay, we'll pick that up and that takes care of it. So that's the only reason pre-K has really become a conversation. However, it continues to be a conversation because it's one of those things that we're not funded for. Kind of like that assistant principal position, the training position, we're not funded for that. So it's above and beyond.
We are funded for five.
We are funded for five, excuse me, yeah, but, but Correct.
Pre-K.
Five pre-K.
Because we have three at Willem Park, correct? Three pre-Ks?
No.
One?
We have three, especially in pre-K.
And one, make three spare pre-Ks at Willem Park.
So GP really pays for no pre-Ks. There's
That one.
Until this year, like she's got state funds that do five, he's got federal funds that do three. I have federal funds that do two, but mine were reduced. So currently, as of this past school year, we're paying for pre-K position.
And you still could have, you still could have, but you would have had to have cut two hundred thirteen thousand dollars from something else that we would have had to pick up, so.
It'd be like, it's either, I just said, here's the deficit money I have, what could come out of my budget easy for that? And it was just pre-K. If I had intervention, then interventions you have to have, GP would have to pick up intervention. I could pick up pre-K, you're going to have to pick up interventions, it's just going to be a trade-off.
So just out of curiosity, I think I may have asked this already. The educational instructional coach, can that pay for a pre-K? There are grants, is it separate?
It's separate. The instructional coach, from what, the same money that I used for pre-K, I would pay for half of an instructional coach. So you're just, it would even pay for a pre-K teacher. It would pay for a pre-K educational assistant. But then we're paying for half of that instructional assistant, uh, instructional coach elsewhere. So are they going to work part, halftime, does that mean GP's going to pick up their other half?
Right.
So the only thing that's above and beyond is this new position that we've got for the training for Mr. Kyle. And then this right here that got cut.
No, not exactly. I mean, there's, the list, like I said, it's not exhaustive, but things that we mentioned like two pre-K programs that we don't have, we had federal funding for that we don't now. You know, the assistant principal at Finley, Warrior Academy is above and beyond. We don't have to have Warrior Academy. But I would argue that we would be in bad shape if we got Warrior Academy because our graduation rate would be lower than the state average. And so I can make an argument that that's a pretty valuable program. An additional SRO at White County High School. I think we'd all like, everybody enjoys having two up there and then we feel safer with two than with one. And they're doing a great job. You know, capital improvements, you know, do we have to fix all the bathrooms that we're fixing? I don't know, they're forty years old probably, but, but you know, that's what I'm saying, these are all things that we need to look at. You know, there's one school bus, you know, we were going, we're going to do three, but we totaled one. We could drive an old one another year, that's a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. But we're going to have to bite that bullet at some point, we're going to have to replace that bus. So anyway, the point is, is there's all, these are all things, yeah, these are all things that we can look at. You know, behavior positions. You know, two years ago, I mean, our teachers were desperate for us to, you know, get some behavior measures in place and we did that. And we, but we put a behavior class in place and they'll all just say that that was, you know, they're still claiming for more help. If I take that away, phew.
You want to talk about?
What's the ratio? Is that at the middle school?
We have one at the middle school, we have one at the elementary level, we have one at the middle school and then we have Warrior Academy and ISS and some different things at the high school. But you know, those were all done as a means of trying to listen to teachers and tell, help them fit their needs, so. There's not a lot of fluff in our budget. I know, it's, it's a huge budget, I know. And, and, but I, there's just, when I look at it, there's nothing, I think, oh yeah, we can just get rid of that. And teachers wouldn't feel it, or parents wouldn't feel it, students wouldn't feel it.
And Mr. D, if it's okay, he's done, so Mr. D and I talked about this on Friday. There is a possibility that my grant for my five pre-Ks was due this year in December, okay? And so that's, if I'd have known at that time, I might could have asked for at least one more. You know, two is a stretch because everybody else has asked for them also. So if I'd have known at that time, I might could have asked for another, an additional pre-K that
Would have
this grant would be paid for. So that is a possibility for next year. And it could even be, a lot of times those monies open up, I could even be able to ask for one this year, but at this point, they only, at this time, they've already accrued my grant and they've given me
What you're going to get.
What I've got. I don't have my budget yet, but so there is a possibility that we could recoup one of those at least next year.
But that would be for the twenty-five, twenty-six cap school year. So, but it's a, a good point. Again, you know, you're thinking about
So our budget might look better next year.
It could.
Well, at least we could address that challenge. Address that challenge, okay. Any more, any more questions about general purpose fund? Okay, then, then let's go to the cafeteria fund and is Mr. Markham going to speak to that?
Yes, please.
So for you, just a much smaller question for cafeteria show. The front page is revenues. And as you recall, halfway through the year, we changed to everyone being CDP, so community eligibility program for free breakfast and lunch. So we started with the high school and adding now on CDP for half of this year. Last year in the budget that you see there, we didn't have that provision at the time. So we're seeing a projection next year significantly lower charges for current services. We're not expecting to get any lunch payments from children or income from breakfast and that's because of the CDP program. But that's made up for down in the last section on the revenue side in the USDA school lunch program. Funding going up there and also funding going up in the breakfast program as well. So the vast, vast majority of our funding in school nutrition will come through the federal government even more so than it has previously. As we continue to roll out this CDP. We're able to lock in a new CDP rate. That will lock us in for another few years where we can continue to do that across the industry. So we're projecting revenues of three million one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars next year in central cafeteria fund. If you flip over to the back to expenditures, the vast majority of that goes toward personnel and food. Personnel and expenditures are just going up based on the salary schedules and associated retirement, social security, medical insurance, unemployment and Medicare just go accordingly according to that. Just wanted to point out in, toward the bottom in line four twenty-two, food supplies, that's increased to a hundred thousand over this past year. And we'll be doing good if, if we can make it with a hundred more thousand dollars of that food supply money. Food supplies have just increased significantly, I mean, just like they have at the grocery store for all of us. They have just on a grander level for school nutrition. But we're, you know, we're making, we're making a do and cutting where we can. We were able to make some adjustments in the food preparation, preparation supplies, we're saving funds there. But all in all, it's, it's pretty, you know, once we pay for the cafeteria folks that need to run the serving lines, cook the food and the food itself, there's not a lot left there. So we're projecting a estimated expenditures of three million five fifty-eight, six oh nine. That's a difference of three hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. We, we expect that that will, again, generally will be reduced and that, but we have a healthy fund balance in school nutrition. We project our school nutrition, eating fund balance to be one point four million dollars. If everything were to go according to plan, but we expect it to be a little bit higher than that in, in next year.
So federal money for, for this, for the, for nutrition, that even though expenses are going up now, by the time they put their monies projections for what they're going to pay, they probably haven't caught up, caught up to the inflation number.
No, and we're, we're currently, we're basing these revenues off of last year's or this current year's reimbursement rates. They've not released any reimbursement rates for breakfast and lunch. We anticipate those going up a little bit, they historically have, but so we, we expect maybe to get a little bit more than we're projecting on here, but we do not
But you don't, you don't have that information?
No, it's not available yet. They usually don't release that to the first of July.
Yeah, gotcha. So, so you're just going based on prior year's expense, reimbursement ratios?
Correct, and our new, and our new reimbursement rate for CDP.
Okay, all right. Any questions on?
But that, that is a good point, Mr. D. It's all federal funds coming in there except for the little bit of money that we get from lunch payments from adults as they visit or teacher services, everything else is federal, it's federal funds.
Okay, so that's, that's how we're basing our revenue for, for cafeteria, our cafeteria nutrition program. Any questions on cafeteria fund? Okay, all right. Any other questions on budget information that we've been presented tonight? Appreciate you hanging in there, we've been at this for about two and a half hours, no break. Thank you for staff for being here to answer questions. So I'll go down the agenda as we, as we wrap up. Public comment, we had no one sign up to, to speak to, to us tonight. Public comment, that leads us down to, next item is new business, there's no items for new business. Item eight is old business, no items on old business, leads us to number nine and that's chairman's comments. So just remind everyone that we'll have a board meeting Thursday, that will be May thirtieth, this Thursday, six P M. Here at the Board of Education. At that point in time, we will deliberate and then consider taking board action on the budgets that were presented to us. So with that, next item is adjournments.
I'll move.
Same.
Chairman, please. Yes, sir.
Will we have anything about the fundraisers on the next meeting?
No, those will be probably in the June thirteenth meeting, those are coming in now. There's, there's two travel requests on there because they had to, there are two, get them turned in so they can get their registration fees turned in. Yeah, there's two travel requests, one archery, one basketball.
But they will be Thursday?
They are on there for Thursday, they're on the agenda and it should be posted, I think, it's already out there on the website.
Any other questions? Have motion and second, all those in favor? Thank you, thanks everyone for attending.